Let's see, we're in place.
I delete this. Senator Black of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, our God, and the municipal, literally, Christian world.
Rumble.
That's how we should start every new, the new official.
Everybody knows everybody.
Just a little PSA about the sign-in form. The, I just am going on the same town hall sign-in form since it seemed easier that way, and I know that they're using the sign-in form for contact tracing. We won't need it, but just in case it's helpful that we all sign in on the town hall form. So, thank you, everybody, for signing in.
Addition or deletion?
Okay, so, a couple of things. So, I did, just a PSA about that. So, I did read, there were some updates, just some reiterations about the open meeting law. And one thing that the board has to be careful about is adding things the night of the meeting. The open meeting law does say that we should try to shy away from that, so just a general PSA for agenda requests. To try to do like 24 to, like 48 hours before the meeting would be helpful. That was just a little PSA that I was going to bring up anyway, but then for tonight, Mike Wesco had requested to be on the agenda, which Mike Beecher, I forwarded to you. And then also, for old or unfinished business, we, there, the board needs to sign the Fuss and O'Neil contract information for the scoping study, the pedestrian scoping study. So, I figured that could be under old or unfinished business. And then, I think that was the main thing. I had a couple of things that I can just bring up during new business or public comment about some emails that had come in, but those are the two.
A great deal of letters.
Opposed additions.
Has anybody looked at any of these? Did you look at any of these?
No.
These letters are all on my place here, all through the Town Hall Select Board, so we'll have to...
Are they the...
I don't know, I haven't even looked at them yet.
Okay, so, a great deal of letters.
So, we'll have to make some time.
They might be the survey, yeah, so we can, if that is the case, we can add them to the box.
Delegate. I was all nervous. Could imagine.
We've gotten at least 13 responses to the online version as well.
Okay.
So, why just open these at some point and see if they're served?
Yeah, you could just pack two of them and add those to the survey once too, please, if you don't mind. Thank you. Okay, oh, that's good to serve.
And so, and then, so, Mike, for your item, I didn't know, so you do have a DRB hearing scheduled, right? For the 18th, I think, of October?
That's news to me. I have nothing. I'm back.
Oh, okay, okay. I had just, I'm just trying to collect info so we can all stay efficient, so...
I did send an email to James Glick.
Okay.
He did not respond to that, because I told him I dropped it off that Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, go get these sent over.
Okay, alright.
Are you alright with that being under old or unfinished business, a continuation of that? Okay?
Okay.
Approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything that the minutes...
So, I just wanted to give an opportunity, there was an email that came into the board regarding some concerns with
To address that, please.
The public comment item, so I just wanted to make sure the board all saw that concern and had a chance to consider that before approving the minutes.
Yep. And I feel that the minutes were quite correct. They, we go by the state guidelines that they're not a verbatim, that they're only to address the points made, not word by word or anything like that.
Yeah.
So, I think that you very, very well made a reference to all the points that were brought up at committee, so...
And I, just, as like a, you know, from my perspective, I always try to keep it pretty neutral and informative and abide by the open meeting law. So, if there's any sort of layout issue or wording, happy, no offense taken, I'm happy to edit, but, that's...
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Does that have a second?
Well, second.
Second? Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Announcements?
I don't think so.
Nothing?
Okay.
Is there a report from the zoning administrator?
Not that I saw.
Okay, is there a report from the planning commission?
I haven't sent in my written report yet, but I can just give a brief verbal description. We had our meeting of the planning commission last Monday, and we had a representative there from Green Mountain Power, who was very informative. And the main things that we learned are that the solar power that is going up in our area, that has to go through our, what's it called?
Substation.
Substation, yes. I was saying transformer, no, that's wrong. It has to go through our substation. So, the substation brings the power in, but it also sends the solar power that we produce here back out. So, the, the size of the substation limits how much solar power we can produce that we don't use locally and that gets sent away to be used by someone else. Now, right now, we're kind of at the edge of what we can fit in our substation, but the only reason we're at the edge is because they have this queue of projects that are in the process of being approved.
Big ones.
Yeah, there's one that is, what, four megawatts?
Four point one.
So, yeah, so it's huge.
In the Town of Polat?
I think it's in Wells, but it goes off the same substation. And it's going to be multiple acres, and this is in the process of being approved, so it's using up nearly half of our substation, just for this one solar project. So, that means if there's any more major solar projects that want to come into our area, they can't happen, I mean, unless that big one pulls out of the list. Now, maybe it'll fall through and it won't happen, but this doesn't include small roof-mounted ones. The, the representative specifically said that they leave like a 10 or 15 percent wiggle room in their numbers, so that folks who want to make a 15 kilowatt or smaller, like small ins, personal installation can still do it. But if anyone wants to put up a big installation, like a farm wants to put up a largest installation right now, they actually could not. So, that's, that's kind of important news for, for our area. So, yeah, that's the main thing that we learned from him. Frank, did you want to add a little something? You were also there.
These mega corporations that are putting in these big projects basically can hold a queue for a lot, for years, and that prevents anybody coming in. And Annette had said before that across Vermont, if you went to these big solar installations, which are typically near the substations, if you can get them there, because that's most efficient and less costly, that you'll see trucks from Texas and workers from Texas, and the corporations putting a manner from Texas. So, the Vermonters aren't getting any benefit of this, because all the profit being made off of these things, once they get built, is money that's going to Texas, okay? Which is behooving to me, because the state of Vermont, I believe, is, I could be incorrect, is offering credits and incentives, right?
And which are getting smaller and smaller.
Which our taxpayers paying money to benefit, a Texas corporation, the money's going to go to Texas. It's not, it's not developing economic development, really. Here, it's doing green energy, but the other side of the coin is, is there was a person from, from a state senator from Rutland County, she's not there anymore, her, one of her sons who was an atomic engineer, and the other son was electrical engineer. And they have a lot of interesting kitchen discussions, tables. And she said that the hidden story behind renewable energies, wind, solar, is that the power company wants to keep a steady diet of power going through the grid. Solar, for example, gets to where the sun goes down and it drops off a cliff, and they have to have, fill it in somehow. The only thing that they can fill it in right now quickly enough to get it built up, to fill in, is with fossil fuel. So, she says what's happening, told me in West Rutland, just sitting in the doorway of a gymnasium a few years ago, that the gang, fossil fuel gang was against renewable energy. Now, they're for it, because they're funding the growth of renewable energy, so that the fossil fuel growth will grow right along with it, and so they're getting the money here, and they're getting the money here, both. They don't care where the money comes from, okay? Because they're on the production side of both, both of those.
Okay.
And it's not generally Vermont State, corporations in Texas and anything that's benefiting from, from this, from an income perspective.
And that's all, and that's all determined at, at the state level? The Board of Public Good?
Right, it's state.
Because it's way above, way above anything that we have any input on.
Yeah, although, if we are able to get our enhanced energy plan up and going, then the PUC will give us, I always forget the term, basically enhanced consideration.
Right.
Yeah, which is...
Consideration.
Yeah, which is, it will be a bigger consideration than we would have had before.
Without it.
We don't know what percentage that amounts to. Though I did read an interesting article recently, that the Public Utility Commission regarding a project in Manchester ruled against it, because of the aesthetic views of the mountains.
Oh, yeah.
So, and that's kind of what we're hoping to put in the language of our enhanced energy plan, is to talk about, you know, the Route 30 corridor and the aesthetic considerations, you know, and also that we don't land on ag land. So, anyhow, not everything, obviously, not everything that Frank said was at our planning commission meeting, because you'd spoke to another thing that you'd heard about, but...
Right.
The one thing I do want to add is that Frank did say that some of these might be in the queue for years. The big one that is in the queue here for our area has only been in since like April, so we don't know if it's actually happening. If it doesn't happen, all of a sudden, we'll have a lot more space for individuals to put up their smaller solar device. So, that's, that's the information we got. It was very good information, though not terribly heartening.
Now, does the cap encompass all renewable energy or just solar?
He only spoke about solar, but I'm not sure what other renewables we have here in Polat. Is anybody pulling up windmills?
You could have methane, or, you know, it's, yeah, windmills.
I would say any, anything, because it all has to do with feeding back through the transformer substation.
So, it's all renewables, it's not just solar?
Is that correct, Carly?
Anything that, electrical going back into that substation is what is hitting that, is going to hit that cap.
The substation has a rated capacity, and regardless of how you feed, backfeed it, it can only take so much.
Yeah, and they're not planning on upgrading it soon. What would happen would be if another, if a major installer wanted to come in and wanted to put in a large power plant of some kind that would go beyond the ability of our substation, it would be on that developer to upgrade the substation, which would be in the millions, and so a developer probably wouldn't do that. They tend to go places where there's already a substation, where there's still some...
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah.
Frank?
But Gary also came in with a question, that if a substation were upgraded costing millions, that some of that would be bore, that cost would be borne by the rate players for the electricity. And, and Josh said yes, and that was a very good point that Gary brought up, because this is a double whammy against Vermonters accommodating a growth of out-of-state corporations' income development. Basically, it's not benefiting Vermonters at all, as far as I can see. I said, I said to him, I says, you know, if everybody in Vermont knew about this, everybody would be blank, 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 right? And so, that's the problem, is we were mis, we misunderstood our capacity in the red being 90 percent. We're at, that's all sucked up by these queued, enormous power projects, and including potentially interfering with any municipal power directions, where you could use the money to pay highway budgets or school budgets or something off solar, which would be a great thing for all the town people to do, instead of having, all process states, instead of having the money go to Texas.
Thank you, Frank.
So, yeah, that's, that's my, that's my report.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Jessica. Road Foreman, has anybody talked with any of the guys on the road? Rich or Bob, have you?
I talked with him the end of last week, and Perry's off this week, Dale's by himself. He's doing some ditching on the switch roads. We're doing some roadside mowing, cleaning some culverts, just some maintenance before winter, so...
How's the new machine working for them?
It's working well. We're still waiting for the head, the five-foot rotary head, but the head that came with it is working well. They're just trying to get the grass cut now, and later on, they'll go back after the brush, start getting that cut back.
Is it, the blowers installed? The new blowers installed on the...
It's on, they haven't used it yet.
Okay.
But they do have it installed.
I see that we have it. They cut a check for it, so...
Mm-hmm. Okay. It is here, and it is on the three-point hedge.
Yeah, okay. And other than that, everything seems to be going...
Mm-hmm.
Have you talked to Keith lately? I didn't end up talking, texting this week.
I haven't talked with him in a week and a half, yeah. Is he on tonight?
No.
Yeah, who is on? I guess we didn't talk about that during the audience.
The Shonemans, and Jennifer Sullivan, and Julie, and KB Donahue is online with us.
Thank you.
I don't know if would now be a good time to, Jennifer Sullivan had, had reached out to the board inquiring about the placement of the West Polat road signs.
The, the, the speed sign?
Yep, yeah, sorry, the speed signs, so, I don't know if anybody wanted to...
I did see that.
Let me see if I can turn this around here for you. There's Jennifer.
So, Jennifer, a couple weeks, actually, it was two meetings ago, you did send us a, a email that I'd read, but then something, it didn't come up in the meeting, unfortunately, but you had some different opinions of, of where may be a, a more suitable spot for that road sign than up by the dump building?
Yeah, I sent some photos of some places in town. Since then, Mammy, you know what? Showed me some information from the, the dealer of the speed sign, about the distance needed in front of it, which makes sense. There's a family that is living in the building that houses the post office, they have children, who after school are usually playing outside, they ride their bikes across the street over to the fire department parking lot, so, and that's just one thing among many, but it's a fairly new development, so my thought now is perhaps putting it in the fire department parking lot, out of the way of the fire engines, of course. It just because people coming from Rupert, some of the worst offenders, it would give them plenty of vision to see and for the device to show them their speed and to slow down before they get to that place. So, I don't know what the plans are for where we're going to put it and how long we're going to leave it there, but that's just something that I think is worth considering.
That seems like a reasonable place, because I have noticed a lot of extra children and stuff playing in that area, the firehouse, in the last couple of months, so, that seems very reasonable to me, that people can come popping in from Rupert and, and not really be slowing down yet, where everybody else is coming around, has to slow down for a physical object in the way, so... So, maybe we could talk to the road crew with, with Perry being out, that it wouldn't be something that they could move alone, but maybe in a few weeks or something, when they're back and have a, a potential, that we could see if we could possibly move it down there by the... Oh, you want to put on your lawn, Frank?
Well, I'm wondering how Julie's budget's going, so you may be able to order the other two?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
So...
Thank you.
If you... Okay, thank you, Jennifer. No, he doesn't.
Thank you.
So, maybe if you're talking with Dale and Perry, and when they get back, if, then we could put it right on the edge of the blacktop, right there, it wouldn't be in the way of fire trucks or anything, I think that would be a good place to try for a little while.
Who's the chief down there?
Uh, Ricard, Dave Ricard.
I can talk with him, and we can find a spot that's out of the way for him.
Actually, I think that the edge of that blacktop is the right of way to that garage out back. It doesn't even belong to a fire department. There's a right of way, all the way between, between that house and the firehouse to the, to that garage that Johnny McGuire was going out back there.
A power pole right there to run that little patch of grass.
And I can talk to that guy, because I work with him, and I'm sure he'd have no problem with us putting it there.
Let me know, and I'll...
I'll mention it to him.
As soon as you get an answer, I'll talk with the guys about it.
I just got to remember to ask them. So, okay. Anything from the assessors?
So, there was an errors and omissions report that I think is in Julie's folder. Karen said she was going to leave it in that folder to be signed.
There it is, right back. Okay.
So...
So, errands and omission is when something either gets left out or gets put in. Are you guys familiar with that or not? In the, in the tax...
No, that makes sense.
When they, when they put everything in, into the grand list, you can help me with this when you got, you're the senior guy in this. Sometimes if either something gets put in wrong, wrong numbers, or they don't have everything all put to the right person or something like that, to correct it, they have to, we have to sign an error and omissions. And this one here was the Gregory Gross, and that happens to be, as you're, as you're leaving West Polat, it's an old Kramer firm, that would be, as you're headed out of West Polat, just past where the Hookery is, the old ironworks, that very first farm right there on the road, that, that farm right there is now owned by Gregory Gross. And apparently, there was a 30-acre parcel, it was a non-contiguous parcel, so it wasn't added into his, his complete grand list package. It says the parcel number 01532391, confusion with PTTR due to other non-contiguous parcels included in PTTR. The total change in the grand list is 27,000 increase. There's no valuation changes being made, and I can't even say PTTR, I'm not really sure what that is. It has to do...
Property transfer tax return.
Thank you.
That was, that was all me. Sorry, Julie totally...
Basically, that, that.
You've got Julie on your side.
I'll sign and go there. So, so that's all there is to that, just basically going through the procedures to, to get this all corrected, so... I guess we got to make a motion to sign the errors and omissions.
I'll make the motion.
Bobby will make that motion, is your second?
Oh, second, Pat?
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? It's gone all good. In two weeks, no, I'm really, I'm serious, it's like...
Second nature?
No, it's just a huge improvement. Well, now we got the rest. Town Clerk's memo.
So, there was no report submitted via email, and I didn't see anything on the desk, but I did hear from Deb that she had gone to that conference?
Yeah.
And had a great, it was very informative and had a nice time, and that she had some interesting tidbits that she was excited to share with us about updates with the open meeting law, which is what prompted me going back and reading the open meeting law, just to make sure that I knew. So, I, I haven't heard anything from her, but, and as far as I could tell, I didn't notice anything totally out of the ordinary with the open meeting law. I think we're doing a pretty good job. That, the one major thing that I did see was just paying extra attention to trying to make sure the agenda, when it's distributed, is as accurate as what it's going to be the night of the meeting, just for transparency's sake, because, as we all know, with open meeting law, transparency, you know, and discussing everything in the public is the ultimate, the pinnacle, so...
So, she was hoping to bring back some information about voting and stuff like that?
Yeah, so, nothing for this meeting, but maybe something for next time.
Town Clerk's, uh, Town Treasurer's memo.
Yes, so I did, Julie, I think Julie's, Julie, do you want to do your memo?
Hi.
Oh, there you go.
So, I did email you all warning that it was going to be a little bit sloppy, because there are four warrants this week, but the, the total payable was $7,905.40. Accounts payable was $469,102.76. And then, I really want to like have an opportunity for everyone to understand the breakdowns of this. So, general fund money is $450,411.3, and I'll go through the breakdown of that below. Highway was $13,335.10. Waste water was $7,762.03, and the equipment fund was $5,500, which is the blower. So, the appropriations warrant was $441,021. That includes $57,000 that are what I call inter-fund transfers, so funds that stay within the Town of Polat, just move from account to account. So, that includes the equipment fund appropriation, the wastewater appropriation, and the capital maintenance. And then, that also includes the first half of the highway tax collection, and that's $269,629. So, the other thing I want to point out is that one of the appropriations is funds to both the Polat and West Polat Fire Department, and that we pay half in the fall and half again after the February collection. So, the total appropriations that are paid to outside entities, so money that doesn't stay within the Town of Polat, but goes to other entities, that is on warrant, the warrant day, is And then, the total appropriations that are paid to outside entities for the entire year, which is what is voted on when people vote through all of the appropriations at Town Meeting Day, is $181,892. And I just want to make sure that the townspeople understand when they vote yes and no on all of those, what the total amount comes to. So, the total amount that comes from all of the appropriations passing, except for maybe one this year, is $181,892. And then, the other thing that I put in here was our tax collections of property taxes and wastewater. I think we're doing really well. We're on track with last year, and last year, we were on track with the year before, so I have no complaints. I will say, the wastewater collection is done four installment, and if we, if we were at literally 25 percent, we would have a remaining levy of $84,645, so we're doing okay there. We have to keep in mind that some people pay everything, some people pay half, and some people just don't pay until they're hit with calls and collections from our ben equip collector. So, I think we're, I think we're doing well, I think we're on target for previous years, and that's it.
Anybody got any questions for Julie?
Yeah, I, I do. I mean, it's not a big question, just looking at these numbers. With the property taxes, so what you've already collected is like twice... the property taxes, so what you've already collected is like twice as much as what remains to be collected, right?
Yeah. So, but we also, we get all of our state payments upfront.
Okay. I was just wondering why that was since it's, I mean, I pay mine in two halves. So, we get more...
So, one, we get all of the payments from the state on the front end.
Okay.
So, everybody who gets a state payment towards our education taxes gets it on the front end. And that accounts for a significant amount of money. And then I do have a lot of people that pay the whole thing at once.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion to approve the warrants?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the warrants.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Toasted? Carried. Emergency management?
Yes. Bob submitted a report. He, let's see. For September of 2021, Bob Morlino attended a virtual Vermont emergency preparedness conference on September 15th and 16th, and also attended Vermont emergency management meeting regarding the new regional emergency management committee on the 16th. And that concludes the report.
Anything from the health officer, from Jennifer?
Jennifer, do you have anything for tonight?
No, I have nothing to report since last month.
Thank you. And I never received, I don't think I've received anything from the wastewater.
From Jill? I didn't see anything this week.
Nothing new for...
I gotta, I'm supposed to call her. She wanted to just touch base. Couple of weeks ago, I was busy doing something, and then I never got around to calling her back. So...
I think that at this point, it seems, based on the last report, we're just waiting on hearing something from Hoyle and Tanner. They're working on putting together a proposal for us. And I think it'll be interesting to see what our survey brings back regarding the people's interest in utilizing some funds on updating that. So, I think that's all from that. And then...
So, older unfinished business. Mike?
You should have received the email that I did, Mike, concerning Jonas sending an email to you about, on September 22nd, about the production of the 2008-01 permit.
Yeah. So, it was a few weeks ago that he, right?
And he signs it as confused. And I'd like to unconfuse the situation. I can keep it very streamlined. So, I have for each one of you a chronological order of emails that were passed back and forth. The easiest way to start is actually the last page, last comment, which was just sent on the 22nd. And we could flip to the front page. Because he, he reads off that I'm the same individual who claimed at the August 24th, 2021 meeting that Rosenthal cannot produce the permit. He claims he did. I never requested a copy of the permit from the permit holder or their attorney. It's almost a year now since November 18th of 2020. And I've been trying to get to the bottom of this. Still hasn't happened. The copy he provided to me was provided from Susan Seglosky, former attorney for Roblely Farms, and John Thrasher, now attorney for Roblely Farms. The town has not produced a copy of that permit. Yet. Which, again, this looks like a lot of paperwork, but I've streamlined it for everybody's convenience.
Isn't this all information that you need to go through with the DRB?
This is a different permit.
But the DRB is the one that handles the next step when you disagree with the zoning administrator, not the select board.
I haven't gotten a formal letter from Mr. Rosenthal on the 2008-01. He sent notes to Kristen. I haven't received anything on the 2008-01. And if you follow the bylaws that were enforced during that time, the permit never even gets off of first base. It was never warned. Eric Mack, then zoning administrator, does not have the authority to sign a conditional use permit without going before the planning commission first. It's all out of sea points.
Okay. But my point is that we can't do anything about it. It has to go to the DRB.
Under what circumstance? It's not an appeal to a violation of a permit because the permit, as far as the town is concerned, does not exist. If you look at the 2008 annual report, it starts off with dash 02. There's a blank horizontal column for where dash 01 should be. So, if, if all this nonsense went on at the following meetings, which were warned, of which there is no record of any discussion of any decision after those meetings, where's the permit? I don't care if Sue Seglosky and John Thrasher have a copy. The copy Rosenthal provided to me, that's referenced in this email, could have easily been obtained by going Act 250 and looking up Roblely Farm Permit Dash Two. It's been there for years. So, the question is, who handles this event? As far as I could tell, by reading through the bylaws of the town, the zoning administrator has nothing to do with this because there's no permit to be referenced because the town can't produce it.
So, I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
So, I, I think what we're talking about here is you submitted the, is, is Mr. Wesco submitted the two different complaints, right? Two, two different written things. And one of them is the one that is about the, is now going to the DRB.
Correct.
And the second one is the one that you're talking about. And you, and, and Mr. Wesco is saying, am I correct in thinking that you're saying that you didn't get a response from Jonas about that particular one?
No.
Okay.
And I don't think he can. If you read the bylaws of the town, he doesn't have the authority to. There is no permit.
So, what remedy are you seeking here?
I want guidance of how to file an appeal, if there's such a thing you could do to something that hasn't been violated because it doesn't exist. You're in new territory.
So, you say that, that the Thrashers have, have the permit, a copy of the permit, but the zoning administrator doesn't?
What I'm saying is if you look at the history, the trail of paperwork that I've already provided to the select board, and if you follow that chronological timeframe, none of the bylaws of the town for the January 24th, 2008 approved permit signed by Eric Mack is invalid.
Okay. So, you're saying that that approved permit is invalid because Eric signed it, not the DRB?
Eric signed it without the authority to. It had to go before the planning commission. And at the time, it would have been ZBA. On top of which, if you find in the minutes of the planning commission, you'll find that four days later, on the 28th of January, Eric Mack brings up the fact that there needs to be a hearing about a conditional use permit in an Act 250 sand and gravel pit. So, how is that first permit that he signed on the 24th even begin to get to be valid? That thing vaporized the moment he said that at that meeting. Because that is one way that a zoning permit can be appealed, is either by an individual of the town or presented by the zoning administrator to the next level, which would be the zoning board of, of adjustment or the planning commission, which he did four days later. In the notes that Kristen read at the last meeting, Jonas Rosenthal reiterated what Sue Seglosky said in the March meeting of that year, that the 15 days had passed. That's complete nonsense. The 15 days did pass. They passed 60 days before that. It was never properly presented. It was never properly channeled through the proper development or the, what's the?
ZBA.
ZBA.
The ZBA.
The planning commission. So, how, how, why is, why is the first line on the annual report of 2008 blank? Doesn't say denied, doesn't say deferred, doesn't say approved. There's nothing there. Okay. I've looked for all the supporting information. Public warning of that permit, nonexistent. Records from the planning commission of that permit being authorized to be signed, with them having received two sets of plans and having gone over the site to make sure that it conforms to the town plan. None of that exists.
This is all the 2008 permit. And where's the 2008 permit, which...
That allows for blasting in the feedlot area, along with a more detailed set of sedimentation control and reclamation plans, which is another joke when you're up there at the sand and gravel operations.
And that was all from the state?
No, that was, that was done by Stan Tech Engineering.
State had to approve it, correct?
The state did approve that for their permit, but the town should have also received two copies of that prior to the 2008-01 permit being issued on January 24th.
And so, those copies...
Those copies never, those copies never even were mentioned until March, when Sue Seglosky creates a scenario where it's, the hearing is even invalid because the 15 days have passed. What 15 days? It was never warned. It's a conditional use permit. The actual bylaws of the town were violated by the zoning administrator in approving it. I know how to read. All right? If you, I highlighted the 2001 bylaws. Of everything that applies to the 2008 permit unquestioning. Anybody want a copy?
I mean, I have it.
And it what, what you don't have is the process in which, after the permit was applied for, that it went to the planning commission and the, and the ZBA for approval?
It does not exist, Mike. There are no records that I could find that Eric, Eric Mack could not even produce the permit he signed to Kevin Mason, a neighbor of the Roblely Pits, when he asked for it two years ago, three years ago, prior to Eric Mack resigning. All right? So, now Jonas Rosenthal interim cannot produce it.
So, I have a question. Hypothetically, if hypothetically, this permit from 2008 was incorrectly, or was, was not valid, right? What would that mean?
We'd have to go through the process again, I suppose.
Also, is there any kind of statute of limitations on permits? I mean, this was, what, 12 years ago? 13?
I've looked for that. I have not found any. I've gone through the town.
I'm afraid we have to talk to our lawyer about that before we could say anything.
Yeah. Because that's, that's one thing I'm wondering. You know, what would be the...
Supposedly Jonas did do that already. She's copied, she's also copied on the reply of the permit being produced.
Okay. So...
Well, I, I would suggest that we see if we can get some more specific answers from Merrill about, you know, whether there, about time.
You and Rich have been working on this project. Do you want to continue to try and...
Um, I, I'm unsure if I can directly contact Merrill or not. Doesn't she only talk to you as the chair?
Well, she does. It's basically just as a formality, you know? But I can say that, you know, can you, can you guys get together? I, I, basically just so everybody's not going at her.
Right, right.
Because every time she answers an email, the, the motor's ticking, you know?
Right, yeah.
So, but I can...
I do just think this is just like from a rulebook perspective. It's important to remember that this is not a select board. I know that we want the select board's support on this. And I'm totally on board with that. And I will help to facilitate connections with Merrill. Happy to do that. However, based on what the rules and responsibilities are of the Vermont Select Board, this does not fall within that. So, I, I totally hear you. I'm not...
I'm asking for advice.
Right. So, I think what needs to happen is, I think what Jessica is saying, because at this point, first of all, this is so much for, it's wonderful that you're collecting this information. I just want to say that. And it's very helpful. However, it's a lot for the board to be able to look at and digest and reply to. And it's hard because they can't get together without being here to talk about it. So, it's this, it's a difficult, sticky wicket. But I think that's just something that's important to remember, is that ultimately, this is a zoning issue. And a lot of permits, not, I'm not, I'm just providing a different perspective. A lot of permits never even go before the, before the select board or the DRB. And a lot of times, it's just a simple, it's been posted on the bulletin board. And back in 2008 before, I mean, I know everything was digitized and online, but it was not quite as thorough. So, there's just a lot...
It's not a regular permit. It's a conditional.
Exactly. It's a conditional use permit. So...
Special rules and regulations.
But it still doesn't go to the slackboard.
Which I...
What's that?
The slackboard doesn't have anything to do with conditional use.
Which I know it did go to the ZBA.
Or Act 250 or anything like that.
Well, yeah, I'm not even talking about Act 250. It has nothing to do with it.
I guess my, I guess where I see the select board in this issue is that Jonas is a town employee, right? And so, if, and so was the previous zoning administrator. And so if, and so was the previous zoning administrator, right? So that if there was, if Mr. Wesco is alleging that a town employee did something wrong, I mean, we're the bosses of the town employee. So that's where I see.
It's our responsibility to find out the direction to.
That's where I see us having a possible thing.
At this point, we can, we can talk and try and determine the course of action.
And I have provided to Jonas Rosenthal most of the information that I just spoke of here tonight.
Right.
And it still, still goes back to the 15-day rule. Well, I hate to say it, but if you're going to be the zoning administrator and you don't understand the conditions and the requirements to proceed with a conditional use permit, even if it was 15 years ago, to give a reply that the 15-day rule has passed and the permit is valid? It does not, it does not materialize according to the bylaws.
If I may, just because I did speak with Jonas about that, I think that that answer is perhaps in an effort to like move forward from what we can't dig up from the past and say, okay, the 15-day thing wasn't valid, so now we have to move ahead with filing the complaint and then going through the processes as they stand today.
That's what I'm here to try to find out who am I filing the complaint with?
Right, so it did get filed to Jonas. So as my understanding of the whole thing, I do believe that the, I think that the complaint still does go through the zoning office. And then from there, I, because I connected with the DRB just trying to get an understanding. So as far as I'm aware, I do believe the DRB is anticipating a hearing, which I know is talking about a different permit, but at least that's getting that item rolling. So I believe that is happening around the 18th of October. So I think then it will have to be another, you know, another process for this one as well. So I think that, like what you're saying, Jessica, is that the select board can get involved from the employee standpoint.
Has Jonas answered that particular complaint, right?
Right, which it seems like there's some, that's where the waters are not as clear.
Right, that all the, the information that Jonas hasn't been able to produce, that information that you're looking for at this point, you have not been able to.
I just asked him to simply produce the town copy.
And he hasn't been able to produce that.
If you, if you look at what I just gave you, he states a three times, no, there is no copy in the town records. No, I haven't found it yet. I have more boxes to look through. All right, we're going almost to a year right now looking for this. It doesn't exist. Okay, prior to COVID, I spent a lot of time down here making a lot of copies, going through, if you want to call it an office, that administrator Matt told Deb Hawkins is whenever he's here, just let him in. Let him make copies in there. I used to leave piles of papers because it was so busy in there. I'll come back tomorrow after you guys copy them for me. I find no records to substantiate.
So right now, that's, that's the question that the select board can, can try and find some information on the course of action to go, on how we, how we determine if we can't produce the records, what the next course of action is.
How long will that take, do you think?
I can't say for sure. I'll talk to the lawyer this week, and I hope that we have some answer for next week, but it may be not information for you, but it will be some form of timeline.
And I can, if I may too, I can help to keep you in the loop so that you're not in the dark.
That would be good.
Just wondering if, you know, if we hear of anything. And I think that it is just important, just because, I feel like this is not said enough, that the group of individuals here at the table, just so everybody is aware, all of these folks have full-time jobs too, and they're doing this on top of their 40, 50.
I do too.
So do I. I mean, we all do. So I just want everybody to know that in terms of timeline and turnaround, we're doing, we're doing our best.
On that note, this is off on a tangent perhaps, but Mr. Rosenthal, a couple meetings back, complained about not having a home computer or not having capability, and he's working for three different towns, et cetera. Where are we questioned as far as getting a permanent zoning person? Are we working on that?
No one's applied.
I'm sorry?
No one has applied.
No one has applied?
The ad has been up since I've lived in town.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe when all this is over, I'll apply.
Ask me if I can apply, but I'm already doing a lot.
I said this respectfully. It sounds like Mr. Rosenthal is at least two meetings ago or so. He seemed overwhelmed, seemed to have, you know, great intentions, but eluded, I'm sure you have it in your notes, that he did not have home, I'm repeating, computer capability, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm saying, it seems to me that this could be expedited if we had somebody solely working on this matter to advise you guys and the lawyer or whatever. Let's read some of it. It just seems to me we're after somebody getting in compliance. And we're going through this as a community. I say this win-win. I think Wesco has done a community service here. And it just seems like there's stonewalling, not by you folks, but the process. And perhaps we could expedite the process if getting Frank volunteered to be the zoning commissioner.
Obviously, it would be great to have a real zoning administrator who was an interim and wasn't also working at several other places, but I don't know.
His time is split and understandably.
And there's also budget constraints, you know, how much budgeted per hourly and stuff like that.
Well, Mike, excuse me for interrupting you. I think you mentioned at the meeting, somebody asked a question, what are we paying him? And you said we basically are paying him the equivalent of what we pay the permanent zoning person. I may have been mistaken on that, but I think those are your words.
We have, we have a budget in place with an allotment to pay, and we pay him hourly, not to exceed the allotted time. So we always try and leave, leave some time available for anything that, incidentals that would come up that he would have to go beyond his normal operating hours and such.
Understood. In essence, if I understood you.
Right.
We are remunerating him as if he was a permanent employee, whether it be hourly or not.
Right.
So therefore, I'm saying, let's get a little bit more attention from Mr. Rosenthal or try to get somebody to take that position. I think we could, and I'll end it there because I'm repeating myself, expedite this matter, which Wesco is going round and round in front of you guys, and you guys can't do. I'm just saying, let's move it along if we can.
And what is this, like a five or six hour a week position? I mean, I can see why it's difficult to hire for a position that's that part-time.
I'm just raising my hand on behalf of Julie, whose hand is raised in our virtual room.
Julie, please.
Julie?
Hi, hi. So I just want to be clear that Jonas is being paid in reference to previous zoning administrators similarly. We have never had a full-time position to do this work. You are never going to find somebody to do Polit's work and only Polit's work when they get paid about six hours a week. I think it's wonderful that everybody has ideas about how to run the town efficiently, but until you take pen and paper and Excel spreadsheet, to be honest, and figure out how much money everything costs, don't come to the board and demand full-time employees.
I'm not demanding, Julie, may I answer that because?
It's very clear, it is very clear that this town has expectations that out, that surpass the budget tenfold. So think about that during budget season.
Frank?
Two points. One that clears up this debate we're on right now is the planning commission discussed digitizing records and a grant process to do this, maybe out of this funding. Because if you had somebody step in and they're going to jump into the paper, and going to have to learn, go through all the paper and understand what's going on. If it's all digitized and somebody knew at some point in time, which would be a permanent person potentially, or somebody who's a contractor working for multiple towns would be able to step in, and everything's right there on the computer and go brrr right through it and not have tons of paper to go fishing through, okay, which Jonas hasn't had time to do. And he, and he said he's stretched for time, and then you guys said, well, why don't you do this corner up here and watch over that? Who's going to pay for that? He doesn't have the time to do that. If he's saying what he's saying, which he's stretched out on both ends and he hasn't gone through the boxes yet. So the planning commission is addressing this. It's a process where if we digitize those records, then whoever comes in is going to step into that software, and it's all there, no fishing through the boxes. That's one point. So we're addressing this issue, which may enhance this going forward. Okay, the process, whatever it is. So it's readily available for anybody to look up. The other point is, is that confusion is, is that on the permit that's missing, which may be in the box, we don't know, right? Is that the permatee who got the permit apparently has the original permit? Because the original permit gets handed out, and the town will keep a copy, right? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
No, I'm just saying it was never published in all the rules and regulations and bylaws.
But there was a permit handed out apparently. So that's something that, something that would be an original that should be supplied to the town, so the town has the copy, and then you can go from there, whether it's legal or not, which is going to be a DRB hearing.
So I just think in an effort to sum it up and keep us all from spinning our wheels a little bit more, talking about action items moving ahead for all of us, we as a select board will, with my assistance, will help to contact Merrill and try to just get some information regarding kind of the over, you know, overseeing our town employees and working on figuring out with this permit and what to do moving forward. Because like you said, this has been going on for a very long time, and I think all of us would feel really good about getting some just culmination on this topic. So we'll, so Mike, I'm happy to work with you on that.
VLCT as well.
And yeah, we can contact the VLCT regarding what they might recommend that we do, because this is a new situation, I think, probably for all of us. And the other thing is that, any other action items? Oh, the other thing is, would you like for me to look into the idea and confirm with Jonas and look into republishing the ad for the permanent zoning administrator position in the papers again? Because it has been a little while since it's been in the paper. It's been on the website. But I'm, I'd be happy to see or, you know, we could, if anybody's interested in that.
Rich?
Should check with the farm too and see if they have that permit that the town can't locate.
Right.
Permit that's in question.
Yeah, and also confirm, because didn't you say Sue Seglowski presented it as well?
What was the number on that permit?
2008-1.
01.
Has anybody asked the farm if they can produce that permit?
It's in the Act 250 files. But it still does not mean that the town issued the permit properly because it wasn't.
We should get our hands on the permit anyways and have a copy of it here.
That's the first, that's the first step. And then, then if we went through the proper channels after the permit was, was approved, then it goes to the next two things. The ZBA and the planning commission had to meet on it to approve the conditional use.
This sounds to me like the town screwed up, not the farm, correct?
The process.
Very possible.
The process. Okay, but we'll work on figuring that out and we'll get.
Say, when you say the town, it's more the zoning administrator at the time.
Was a town employee, therefore.
Right, so it's all our, it's all our problem at this point.
It's on the town, not the farm, as far as I can see.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, I'll try to have some answers for you and some kind of timeline on when we think we can work through this project and.
All right, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before, Mike Robinson, I live on Kelly Hill. I'm a neighbor. Before we leave the topic, I noticed last meeting, and of course, this one. No, no comment on getting Matt and Emily some cleaner air this winter? This is the time, if you're going to do a cover crop, you don't want to wait too late. They haven't done a cover crop, as far as I know historically. Can't the town do something to help them? Can't you do something to encourage them to get some darn seed and throw it out there? I don't get it. Isn't that part of the permit? Aren't they supposed to put a cover crop?
Well, first of all. First of all, cover crop's not going to grow on sand or gravel. I mean, you can throw all the seed down you want.
Sure.
I mean, it's just not going to grow unless they put topsoil over the top of it. I don't know what the permit says, but I do know that you can throw all the seed you want on a bank of sand or gravel, and you're not going to grow a cover crop. So I'm not sure what they've got there, but I do know that that's, that's a problem. So there's got to be another way to remedy it other than cover crop if it's a bank of sand or gravel. Because it just isn't going to grow.
Just so the select board knows, I'm going to refer back to what Mike just brought up in terms of Matt and Emily. Under conditional use for rural residential agriculture from the 2001, sand and gravel pits are considered conditional use. And there's four items, of which are in my appeal to the DRB right now. Number two says, operation shall be, all surface damage affected by excavation operations shall be controlled by the owner to prevent erosion, common debris, and any other loose material. All right, so erosion is a big title, not only for sediment and water laden. You've got air pollution, dust mitigation. So the town does have the authority. And if you want to wait till a DRB meeting to start enforcement action for them to clean up the air that everybody's breathing in the area nearest the pit, you know, you have the authority. It's in the bylaws.
May I just for a second? Their Act 250 permit, I would assume spells that out as well, correct?
Even to a greater extent that they're supposed to use an erosion control map on any open surface starting October 1st through May or March 31st. Don't hold me exactly to the dates. They haven't done that ever.
And the state's been down?
It's in the StanTech prints, and it's in the Dufresne Henry prints, StanTech 2008, if that permit exists. It exists on the Act 250 side. Or from the original permit from Act 250, Dufresne Henry also has an erosion control plan. They've never historically done it at all.
Okay, that's another question that we'll discuss with the lawyer.
For a question though, I don't think, I mean, yes, the town does have the, have enforcement ability against, you know, zoning violations, but we couldn't technically enforce something until it's been determined that it's been a zoning violation, right? So it does have to go, unfortunately. It does have, it's like, like, like any other court process, right? We can't bring an enforcement until it's gone through the DRB and a violation has been issued.
I understand all that, Jessica, but the real point is, is that they've been violating most everything at that pit for years, and it's affecting the quality, the health quality now, not just the scenic quality of the neighbors who live there. It doesn't get much simpler than that.
Well, one thing that.
To say that, you know, something should be corrected. Put them on notice. I don't care what you do.
One thing that we're finding out is, is because of the way our zoning regulations are written, it's very, very difficult to enforce any of that, honestly. We found that out, we've spent.
Yeah, I know.
You're well aware of what else is going on in the town and how, how well everything that we've gone through in far as the zoning regulations and stuff like that.
This is a different situation. They already have their permits in place. I'm talking about Act 250. They already have the '06 permit, which is before an appeal right now. But it's, it's all in the meantime. This has been going on for Matt and Emily since, what, February, March? It's going to be a year again. All right, thanks for that. I don't live that close to the place. You know, it's, it doesn't bother me as much. It bothers me immensely, but not, I'm not breathing it every day. I'm not wiping it off my vehicle every morning.
Don?
Has anybody sat with Mr. McClellan on just a conversational basis away from all the process and say, Mr. McClellan, it's been pretty obvious you have been cited in the past? And I'm not going to basically accuse Mr. McClellan of any operating, shall we say, inconsistencies. But he's well-known in the area. I'll leave it at that. You folks know him. Bob, you're in the business of moving dirt. Perhaps, you know, we can talk. Maybe this guy will listen and just eliminate a lot of this and say, "Get compliance." I may be high on the sky, but have we ever thought of talking to he and Charlie? Perhaps we have. I know, Rich, you have spent some time with him. Perhaps we could, you know, do something congenially with Mr. McClellan and say, "For God's sake, what are you doing here?"
To bounce off what Don is just saying is that since, I'm going to say, three, four weeks ago, they're in the process of working out and negotiating AODs with Act 250. For weeks now, they, Rob Lee and their attorneys, won't sign off on the AODs. They won't agree to them, from what I'm told. All right, in the meantime, the last three weeks, the amount of excavation and processing that's gone on in a pit that is supposedly supposed to be under reclamation is astronomical compared to the history of the last two years. They've got two excavators, they've got a large dozer. You know, the permit calls for a crusher, there's several crushers. And where is the town in terms of standing up to the environmental issues that are being created? For the waterways and the watersheds that are in the area that eventually flow into the Meadowwee? Where is the town standing behind the people who have to deal with the violations that are blatantly openly in place expedited?
I drive up there every day and I was somewhat amazed. I looked up and it looked like they moved out. I saw trees up there one day. I mean, it was at least 12, 15 feet below where those tree lines were. And there was a machine pushing a lot of dirt. Maybe all okay, but it seems to me somebody could maybe stop up there and say, "What are we doing? Is this okay? Are you and, you've heard me, I don't know. I just thought maybe we could talk to neighbors, I don't know." Am I high on the sky?
Anything else under new business, old or unfinished business?
Yes, the signatures needed from Fussin' O'Neill for the pedestrian scoping study. So last meeting or two meetings ago...
Eric.
Eric Holcane and the board made the motion to contract with Fussin' O'Neill for the pedestrian scoping study as the engineers. And I forwarded everybody that big email with that huge zip drive of all their documents. And there are two signatures that are needed. One is on the contract agreement with the consultant and indicates that starting the 28th of September, the town is contracting with them. And then the other document is from the Municipal Assistance Bureau Conflict of Interest Disclosure Form for the locally managed projects. So did everybody feel comfortable with that? Would anybody like to sign it? Or would you like more time to review it?
I'm okay with it. Eric had a pretty good presentation and...
Okay, would somebody like to make the motion and do the signing? I mean, I move that we sign this. Okay.
I'll second that.
There's...
Thank you very much.
Good night, thanks guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Who needs to sign it? Everybody?
Actually, just one person. It's just your name, title, and date on one. And then signature of municipal representative and responsible charge.
Sit in my seat and sign it.
I see, thanks. Where's John?
So Jessica, you moved?
Yeah, I think Rich seconded. Thank you.
Is everybody in favor?
Oh, yeah. Did we obviously...
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
So I will send that info back to...
Five, fifth today?
Yes.
Back to them.
Just got hot. Masks make you hot.
There you go.
Thank you. Take that. And that was all that I had for new business or old business.
I have a brief update on that brownfield study for the property of West Pollock. I've been talking to Ed Bove and he says it's ready to begin. He's going to get in touch with the consultant who's going to do the study. The consultant is then going to get in touch with me for a site visit. And after doing the site visit, the consultant will write up the brownfield study report.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that I'm going to then go with the consultant to the site visit. Is there anything that I need to know about the site? I mean, there's nothing, there's no doors to open, I mean, nothing's locked, just...
No, it's just wide open in the back there, I believe. I don't know, I haven't been running down around there much.
Yeah, I went down there about, I went down there about a couple months ago.
I don't know about the property lines exactly.
I mean, it's that weird little shape around that lot that's got the house on it.
Right, there's a little, what color is Ray's building? Gray?
Yes.
Ray's building is gray and I think the property goes all the way around it. Because I don't think he does own that park.
I looked at it on the map. I haven't seen if there's pins.
I'm not sure if there's pins, but Old Ray said that when the store was starting to rebuild, they were starting to boil over on that property. But I don't know.
Well, I'm assuming the consultant will be able to...
Some kind of gray area there.
Figure something out about that, so... Yeah, I don't know if there's pins or not.
Other than that, I think it just, that property has a teeny little piece in there. And then the rest of it all went with the store.
Okay.
Because that big parking lot always went, was part of the store. Ronnie and Joan always parked their cars over, right, in that big parking lot. And then they always, all the delivery trucks went around back and unloaded in the back of the store. So I believe all that property...
Yeah, that's all the site.
All went with the site, so...
Okay.
You just call Frank, he'll come down and show you. Right, Frank?
Yep, you need to move the line because that's extra.
Yeah. Excellent, well, thank you. That's a good, good start to see what we can do in that.
Yep.
The other thing, I don't know, did you ever end up looking and seeing where we talked about the proposal that Josh sent back? He sent a little sketch about how we could step that stream bank?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to see that.
It's basically just coming up a little ways above it and just stepping that back so that we weren't actually digging in where the normal flow of the water was. Just to have a little bit of a relief for a high-water event. So I would think that if nothing more, that if, the biggest thing was trying to get some kind of vegetation back in it after we do it. But so we could maybe move on with this, if we could just get in there and try and...
Something that's a small enough project, the town crew could...
I think they could probably do it. It's not going to be quite as easy with a backhoe because we can't leave the material there because then that would...
We still have a bulldozer.
The town does?
Mm-hmm. Markowski's D4, Santa Rupert.
Oh.
That hasn't been moved back, I don't think.
But I don't think, I don't think we need a bulldozer anyways. I think we just need to cast it up on the bank and then scoop it up and run it down to the dump. I think that if we could kind of time it, I'm sure we could get Josh to come out and meet with the guys and explain what he was looking for. But we just have to have some kind of option, either put some hay...
That design's on the email?
It's kind of a sketch on the email.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
It's probably six weeks ago or so.
And as far as the vegetation, I mean, if we needed to get anything, we could probably get it from the Potney Meadowwee Conservation District. They have a lot of local vegetation.
They said that they have, they could even go for a grant, but that would be next year. Hillary, Hillary, I couldn't think of her name, Hillary Solomon. They could probably do a grant next year to re-vegetate that property. But it'd be nice to get it, get it up for sale. I think if we go...
We'll get on that the first of the week and see. Both guys are going to be back, so...
We could go in there and look at it and see that. And I could certainly, I'm sure that Dale has Josh's number. But we'll call him and see if there's any way he could swing by and meet with him and just talk about it. He did ask me about the property lines. And I got a copy of the deed and I think it goes to like the top of the bank or something like that, the stream bank, that property according. So that's kind of a vague, a vague line, you know, from the maple tree down through along the top of the stream bank, which is not a good way to have a property line because streams wander, you know? So I think that we're probably safe with doing anything in there as long as we don't go over on the other side. So we could probably get by with that. So if we could talk to them about that. It shouldn't take too long. It's basically, they're just kind of cleaning that ditch down through there and just kind of leave all the trees down through there and then just kind of give it a little bit more room if we get a big flood from up back.
Anything we can do to decrease flooding in the whole town is good by me.
That's, forever, that's always been a problem. Growing up there, it was constantly a problem. That, the culvert was a lot smaller at that point still. But it would constantly flood over and run right down through everybody's back. Just a mess. But still, it certainly would be a good thing and Josh was in favor of it and didn't feel it would be any detrimental to anything. Didn't even feel, he said basically the, one of the other things you could do was upsize the culvert, which isn't really all that old anyways. I mean, I guess it's 20 years, but it seems like not much, you know?
Just yesterday.
I guess I'm dating myself, so...
That sounds like a plan.
If we can look into that. And other than that, I don't think there's anything else from, that I wanted to bring up. Any new business?
Just one thing. The library chair, the board emailed.
Oh, right.
The select board looking for guidance as they look to hire their new librarian as Mary Lou has retired. And thanks to Mary Lou for everything that she did. I did not know the answer to those questions. I don't know if Julie, if you're still here, if you ever got in touch with...
John had answered pretty much everything.
Because John had answered pretty much everything. And then Diane had reached out to me because she wanted to just reiterate the questions, I guess. And I think it was basically about budget and if they had the budget to offer more and so on and so forth. So I do, I advised that she reach out to Julie because Julie had a better handle on where the budget was at currently. But I just wanted to bring it up.
And they also did bring back to our attention these steps.
Okay.
That we haven't dealt with and that's... You're on the buildings, aren't you?
I believe so.
Yeah. I mean, we've gone around and around a lot of options. And one option was very pricey to have some work done on these steps. So I think we need to be a little bit more, I don't, inventive, I guess. Research a few options more and see what we can do to these steps because they're starting to come apart. And I think it's beyond the point of just kind of passing the concrete, so, Frank?
Yes, really high-end epoxy cement things that you could do intermittently. It would last for a few years at least probably. But at least during wintertime, it would be, it's strong stuff, really strong.
So I wasn't on the board last time this came up. Why did it cost so much to get the steps replaced?
I don't really, part of it, we had...
Is it like a historic building?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Part of it is, it has to, the facade of all these buildings have to stay the same and have to be approved by them. So then it turns into, I think you have to have approved contractors sometimes, depending on the work, scope of work that you're doing. And we went through the architect and he did a bidding process. And it ended up, and I guess, it may seem a little bit overkill, but you know, when the bigger people bid it, they have to bid in, you know, a portable bathroom and all that stuff, which is, maybe it's not that much, but maybe it's just a little bit more than we're used to at this level.
You know, they even had to pay for flaggers on each end. This is Town Street.
And pull up your old one and put in a new one.
Two full-time flaggers the entire time the project was being done.
So that's something that needs to be...
That was that story, but we, I'm sure there's some documents written around. And there was a couple of, there was two or three different options. But one of them, one of them came in quite a lot of money and we chose not to do that. And then the other two options were more vague. You know, well, we could do this or we could do that, but without any kind of real determined amount of total...
No one really knows what they're going to get into. They don't know if it's just a pile of rocks with a thin layer of concrete over the top or if it's one big solid piece of concrete that the building, that's kind of part of the foundation of the building.
I don't know, it's, I don't know, you'd have to probably, I know they're talking about how they were going to blast it or drill it, hammer them out. Or, you know, they'd have to hammer them out or something like that to repour them in order to stay in the same rise and run and all that and then...
These are the steps over here.
Yeah, and that's...
At that time, did the board just make a decision not to do it? Is that what happened?
At that point, and then it was getting late in the season. It's not a job you could...
We just, we couldn't imagine spending $30,000 to fix a crack in the front steps on the library when we didn't, you know, couldn't spend a couple hundred dollars on something else that we really needed. So we were trying to look for a more reasonable way to fix a crack in the front steps on them. But, Frank?
The highway department look into patching that and/or even doing the replacement work and use your own staff to do it. Because it doesn't seem, Bob brought up, he put in a patio and everything like this and spent penny, you know, fraction, small fraction, a beautiful job. And it's not rocket science, we all know that.
Yeah, but in today's world, I wouldn't dare have our highway department, who's not quote-trained professionals, do something like that that the public's walking up and down. That would be, that would be my view of it. I'm afraid that a lawyer, I'm afraid that a lawyer would love that. Who put these steps in? Doesn't matter if they're the most perfect steps in the world, but, oh, your highway department? Oh, oh.
Would you ask, is Legion City of Towns your insurance to see if they would be okay with it?
No.
There'd be other options.
Those guys got enough work to do. They don't, that job right there, just throw a new set of steps in there is not going to take you five minutes. So not to do it right.
This topic needs to be an ongoing.
That needs to, that needs to resurface again.
Okay.
It's actually the right time to do it because right now, if we start working on it now, we may be able to have a project that we could plan to be ready in the spring. Because you're not, you're not going to pull anything off now through winter until the weather's 50 degrees or better. So you're monkeying around with that. Charlie?
Related to the steps, does this fall within the scope of what is possible under the money coming from the ARPA funds?
Not really, unless, we can't really use it for just repairing town buildings. The only way would be if we were working on something that related to emergency management, right? Like if we had a building that was used for emergency management, that would relate to the emergency. Or if there is, we also can do pretty much anything if it's primarily serving low-income folks.
Because I haven't returned my bill yet.
Yeah, so if we had, if we had, say, you know, if we had a couple different, like, fire departments and one of them only served a low-income area, then we could do more with that. But that's not really the issue here in Pollock. We don't have a designated HUD low-income area.
Thank you.
I guess we could call the front steps like a muster area in a town emergency and that way they'd be part of the emergency management.
Well, if we had, if we had an official town shelter that was ADA compliant or something, you know? And we could...
The library is, Julie submitted this on the chat. But the library as a use, as a mental health kind of assistance location or to benefit people without resources, like if somebody didn't have a home computer or this is the hotspot zone. So if you wanted to come. And I don't know, we could talk to Bob about whether or not the library is listed as, you know, if some natural disaster happens in the community. I remember, I know the Meadowwee School, I think, is a place where people could go. But I wonder if the library...
I can ask them, I have a contact at Rutland Regional Planning Commission whose job it is to like answer... job it is to like answer questions about the ARPA funds, so I could ask about if the library in some way would...
Yeah, because that could help too, if it's not, I mean, if I may contribute. If it's not coming directly out of our building's account and it's out of this money that we're able to utilize, and if we could figure out a way to justify it, that could make it easier to go.
Because it is a place that people have used a lot during the public emergency, so...
Yeah, during the whole...
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of people use it in terms of, I don't know, is the bone builders class still in there? I'm very not up to speed with the bone builders' schedule, so, cool. I can, I'll add that to an ongoing topic of discussion, and then that's all that I had for new business.
Okay. Anybody else have any new business? Public comment? All right. I think...
Make a motion.
I think Bobby wants to say something.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn? I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Thank you everyone for coming.